We've had some prior meetings, we've had a couple of special call meetings, so you should have, I believe, in your packet. The first one is our minutes from our September the 28th meeting that we had, it was our regular scheduled meeting. Should have two pages there. Many of y'all were at that meeting. Some of y'all may have watched that online, because we do publish all of our meetings on our website that links you over to our YouTube channel. So we do archive all of these. Does anybody see any corrections or anything we need to look at on these minutes before entering these into the record? Hearing none, I'll sign these into the minutes of our current meeting. You should have the special call meeting of October the 5th. Those meetings where we had the budget resolutions, purchase order, adoption of those items. Does anybody have any, see any corrections or anything we need to make note of before we sign these into the record? Hearing none, I'll sign these into our record. We had our special call meeting from October the 20th. That was the meeting that was really driven by our grant that we'd received for our scrap tire amnesty day. And we also had a proclamation, a couple of proclamation, or one proclamation and one judicial task force agreement. Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, I'll sign this. Okay, at this time, we'll go into our public hearing, so at this time I'll call us to order on our public hearing. We have the following rezoning application will be heard for the second public hearing. Zero Bluebird Lane, Rossville, Georgia, tax partial zero dash one-two-four dash zero-zero-seven. This is a rezoning request by Mr. Wendell Cornet, I don't know if I'm saying that right. Okay, thank you, is requesting that his address of Zero Bluebird Lane, Rossville, Georgia be rezoned from an R2 residential to a C2 commercial. Is there, let me do this first, let's see. Is anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this request? We'll do those first.
Yes, sir. Out there at fourteen Bluebird Lane, we had a meeting, I think it was on what was it?
Zoning meeting?
The 20th, when was it?
September 21st?
Yes, sir. Which he gave the show. There were six, six, four, three of us there, and I have a petition here from all the local people that does not want this to come about. I brought it with me. Shoot, didn't the fuck was it beyond the?
Yeah, I believe we do have a copy of it.
But I live right there in the middle of his property, and I wouldn't want it to be commercialized. Because that's where I live, I'm already irritated because of the, all the trailers and the business going on there. It's just not, right, they're devaluing my property and most people around it. Do you have a copy of this petition? Yes, well, all these, these names, this is for local people around their addresses.
Tell us again your name for the record.
Michael Wayne Blevins, I live at fourteen Bluebird Lane.
Okay, yes, first one here on the petition.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We all had the meeting and discussed it, and they all seemed to be at the committee to deny the, the proof also. So if I need to say more, I don't know what to say, but everybody just agrees with it around.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Any other opposition? Okay, we'll go to the next step here, anyone in favor of this request? Yes, sir, can you state your name, please?
Well, we're at.
Okay, sir.
We own the property, and this property's always been, back to last forty, fifty years, been a business. And it was a business when he bought his home, and I, matter of fact, I owned the property in front of him when he bought his home. And we've had a conversation about me buying his home, and we're like twenty-five hundred dollars apart on the price. And, you know, if you do a little work to it, I'd go ahead and give the other money. Anyway, the reason I want it rezoned is just so the work that I do will be, I guess, more legal. You know, what I do is work on like heavy equipment, trailers, I do aluminum welding, all kinds of metalwork. And I do some backhoe work, excavation, stuff like that, so. And in this letter, it says something about sharing the driveway. Well, the driveway, I have a gate, I've got pictures here of, if you want to see them. Of the driveway, and there's a gate, there's two lines, and there's like a forty-foot gate that I can use without going around the main driveway. And driveway coming off of Bluebird is like, we got a forty-foot right away up to where it turns towards this house. And then you go straight into my property, I have to keep it chained off, so I don't want people driving through there. This thing should have been zoned commercial, in my opinion, a long time ago. Was a man that had it like forty years ago, had a body shop there for years, and there's another gentleman, this gentleman is with me, that bought the property from him, and he had a body shop and a salvage yard there for, he had three hundred cars there for like, I don't know, ten, fifteen years. And then, then I bought it here about eight years ago or whatever, and I'm doing the same thing now. But I do it when he bought his house, and I ain't playing no change in that, you know? Just want to be whatever it takes to be legal, to do what I do. So basically, just trying to do the right thing, you know? And there's no, nobody's, other than him, I wasn't talking to him before I ever even tried to do this. The city was all right, and then we'll see, you know, he said no. But I'm not changing, like I said, I'm not changing anything, everything's gonna be the same as far as the kind of work I do. I'm not trying to get it zoned commercial so I can do a different kind of work, I just want to do the same thing. You know, coach officers has been there and want me to clean some stuff up, and I got some pictures of what I have cleaned up. And I've tried to do what, you know, what they needed me to do, get the code, and then they said it'd be better if I got it zoned commercial, which is what I'm trying to do. And there's a burnt house in front of me that's beside our driveway that I, you know, they wanted me to try to help get, get it tore down or whatever. So I talked to the owner of that, Ms. Turner, who won this letter, I can't remember her dollar or whatever. But she's trying to get up the money for the dumpster, you know, for the roll-offs to haul it out. You know, they got this one, so they're, they're trying. And so I'm doing everything I can do to clean it up. I want to take care of the driveway, put up his house, always have, ever since he's been there and even before. He's never bought the first driveway. I'm not complaining, I'm trying to keep my place neat. I got pictures here of all kinds of yard art, equipment and stuff around my driveway.
So are you running a salvage yard there?
No, sir, no. I just work on big trucks, equipment. I got a dump trailer, a whole ton of truck trailer up now, it's been turned over, I'm fixing it. I do a little bit of everything.
As I just see a lot of cars in these pictures.
Do you? This is driveway coming in, this is the gate I stopped at that, I could take down. And this is all the yard art. If you want to move it, I'll move it.
Okay, tell me, is this, is this on your property?
Yeah, that's just, that's a pile of chert behind that, and that's, that's round stacked rocks, you make a wall out of it.
Okay, and then... This here, all these cars.
I fixed to get rid of all of those. Johnson Road, my property goes almost to Johnson Road. You can't see them from, you'd have to walk backwards to see them.
Okay, I just could tell this is kind of an open clearing here on the front side, the wooded area.
I cleared all of it, I bought the property, that was all woods. And that's these cars I pulled in, I fixed to get rid of all of that. I've got it, seventy.
And then, this is part of your property?
Yes, sir, I've already cleaned that up, we done got rid of that, I got rid of that, beside the driveway. Everything's gone, except I got a little wood trailer I have to sell. All that stuff's gone, all that's gone, and that's fixed to be gone. That's gone.
So you'd say you're probably what percentage of having everything that the code enforcement wanted you to have done?
Well, I've, I've closed, except for a pile of, 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 a short house down. I done it on the weekend, and I dumped it on my property. It's back in the back.
I think that was here, this here?
Yeah, yes, sir. It's, it's right up beside this, this driveway, this comes from the front, right beside that, and going back to where the cars is at, back here. But yeah, that's laying right beside my driveway, and I put it there so I can load it back up and move it.
Okay, all right. Did you want us to enter these into the record, or did you want these back?
Sure, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll add these to the file then.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Just to let him know, I'd be willing to buy his house if he's, if he comes to a reasonable price.
Okay, I think that's probably a topic for y'all for another day, if you don't mind.
I mean, he brought it up in the letter, so when he was at the first meeting, so I just want to answer it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of this request?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm rezoning his own, I'm in record service. I bought that property in nineteen eighty-six from Roy Swainy, which was an operating body shop, okay? And I, when I bought it, from eighty-six to two thousand seven, it continued, it continued to be a salvage yard because of my overflow. And I cleaned all that up. Roy, when he, I bought it from him, and well, I opened a body shop back up over there. Mike even helped me put a roof on the building. And it's been a commercial property ever since I bought it in eighty-six, and many years before that I even bought it. I mean, there used to be a sign right down there on Bluebird Lane, Swainy's Body Shop. Nobody's ever complained about it then, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
I do know the cars at Better Care Now will be cleaned up, because I've got to haul them out, so.
Okay, anybody else like to speak in favor of this? Okay, this time I'd like to hear from the Planning and Zoning Board Chairman, Mr. Cantrell.
Okay. I personally visited this site myself, went up and looked. The property is, is zoned R2, I believe, residential. The property is definitely not in zoning compliance that way. And it definitely wouldn't be in zoning compliance if we, if we changed it to C1. When we had our meeting at the board, Mr. Cornet did not show up and gave us any of this information that he's brought tonight. The board voted unanimously against it being rezoned. We, we have a lot of pictures also that we have, you know, that we had. He may have some new pictures that we have at saw. But it's a shared driveway with this gentleman who lives in a residential house. He has a couple of, like campers set up for people to live in on the property, which doesn't work either way in zoning. And so, you know, we just saw numerous things that wasn't gonna work, so that's why that we did not approve his rezoning.
Okay. I'd, does code enforcement have anything to add to that, just to dig it or not?
I did ask one thing, yes, sir. Because I always think that. I get embarrassed, I get cleaned up. I was gonna clean all of it, but I hauled it up.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Now, we've had some people come in late, so I'll, I don't want to cut anybody short. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to say against or for this request, since we've had some people come in late?
I'd like to rebuttal to some of the things he said, it's.
Okay, go ahead.
It was Puffad who owned the property prior, and what has been prior, they, they don't have no proof of that, and they can't. So there really no need to argue about unless they got to that point. My driveway was changed since I got there by him, never asked me, and I'm not sure what the, the law would be on that. I have an easement, but it, once I bought the house and lived everywhere, then it was, all of a sudden, he moved it out. Whether I had that right or not, I don't, didn't argue with him. I got along and let that happen. That also, that interfered with my way of in and out of my property. And, you know, I, I think it just, he sort of stressed truth there, and if he wouldn't prove some of that stuff in order to make this happen, I think I should, he should have to, but I don't think that'll happen, so I, I think I made my point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are going to move forward now. And that will end and adjourn our actual public hearing at this time. We will go back into our regular scheduled meeting, and we'll open up into our business section, session, and start with agenda item number one. This is for the approval or disapproval of the rezoning application for Zero Bluebird Lane, Rossville, Georgia, three oh seven four one, tax partial zero one-two-four dash zero-zero-seven. I had spent some time reviewing all of the documentations that was submitted. Also, I had read and reviewed the minutes from the planning, zoning, planning and zoning board committee meeting, and also reviewed the pictures that was presented earlier, and also once tonight. And after hearing from both sides of this, I think it's in the best interest of the citizens of Walker County and for that community at this time to deny this request and follow suit with the recommendations on the planning and zoning committee. So at this time, we will actually be denying this request. Okay. Item number two here is a transportation, transportation service grant by Transit Alliance Group. That, the detail of this is not in your packet, this is one of these things here, that's a very long document. This is a grant through the Transit Alliance Group. And what this grant pays for, and this is just a renewal, this is not anything new. But what this actually pays for is to transport our senior adults to and from their residence to the senior citizen facilities where they can have activities. I'm just trying to find here that page. Give y'all a little more information about this. This is something, this is a grant that's been in play for many years. And there's a lot of legalese and different things in this, insurance requirement, indemnification, hope harmless, payment procedure, smelt the document, liability coverage, Fair Labor Standard Act, auditing, collections. I knew y'all didn't want to have to listen to all of that tonight. Critical incident report. I thought it was here, is there a second box of this? Okay, there's more to it here. So I can see this is a long document, we'd have needed an hour to read this, and then I'd have probably needed a break. I saw something in here, I should have marked, but I apologize. Okay, here we go. Yeah, this is our aging community, the Chickamauga senior citizens, July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. They estimated five thousand trips. They reimburse us at a rate of six dollars per trip, so that's thirty thousand dollars. To the LaFett Senior Citizen Center, they estimate six thousand one hundred and fifty-nine trips at six dollars, that's thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. The Rossville Senior Center in Rossville, thirty-one hundred and twenty-five trips for eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, at six dollars a trip. Then the total for that is, let's see, there's Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, three hundred and seventy-five at six dollars, twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars. So it's a grand total of fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine trips. So when we take a senior to the center, that's a trip, and we take them back home, that's a trip. So this projected grant payment to Walker County is for eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. And this basically is a grant, we're saying police continue to send us the money to pay for this service, to provide transportation to our aging population, to and from the senior citizen centers that we have in our community, at this reimbursement rate of six dollars, so we can take possession of this funding to offset our costs, to make that happen through our transit service. So it's just simply that. Any questions about this? Any additional comment? This is something we just had to bring to the public and sign in public, so we'll go ahead and authorize them to continue to send us a check. Okay, the next item here is a resolution, R dash zero-two-one-one-seven, resolution of the Commissioner of Walker County to assume compliance with the Constitution of the State of Georgia by assessing and providing for the collection and the direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of the interest on a general obligation sales tax bond to be issued by the Walker County School District in the aggregate principal amount of fourteen million sixty thousand dollars, as authorized as an elected, election held for the purpose on November the 3rd of 2015, pursuant to and in conformity with the Constitution and the statutes of the State of Georgia, and for this purpose. So what we had before you here tonight is a resolution, so this is kind of some housekeeping things. And the school board representative is here today, Mr. Womack is here to give us an overview and speak for this as their legal counsel for the school boards. Mr. Womack, would you like to share with us on this?
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioner. I have with me Chris Jones, who's the Director of Operations and Facilities for the Walker County School. And I don't want to take any more time than to satisfy any questions you might have. But basically, under Article Nine, Section Five, Paragraph Six of the Constitution, this is a ministerial obligation that the Commissioner is required to do before issuing spending bonds. Back in November of 2015, the taxpayers voted in an East Floss. And in that East Floss, they authorized for capital outlay projects bonded in debt of up to eighteen billion. That previous East Floss expired, the, the school system has, has had East Floss every five years, a continuation, beginning with nineteen ninety-seven. All of those debts have been paid. The last one was paid, the new ones started, the collections started in July this year. And during that period of time, what has happened is that all of those debts that have been incurred in the past have been paid off strictly from East Floss sales tax proceeds. There's never been, since nineteen ninety-seven, there's never been a tax dollar, there's never been what's called an intercept dollar, there's never been a state appropriation dollar, and there, there's never been a general fund dollar that has been used to satisfy those debts. What Walker County Board of Education did, did, is that they waited after the last East Floss had been paid, essentially, and the new bonds were issued, not for the eighteen million, but they were bonded for fourteen million sixty thousand dollars. So basically, just to show you the, the figures on this, over the five years, the East Floss sales tax is expected to bring in a total of twenty-one million two hundred thousand. What the school district did, even in the ballot, was to reduce that to eighteen billion. And then what they actually issued is fourteen million sixty. So what has happened is, is that they are issuing seven point one-four million less than the amount that would be collected, anticipated, and three point nine-four million less than was approved by the voters. It's the smallest bond issuance since nineteen ninety-seven by the school system. And what, the resolution that you're being asked to do is comply with the Constitution, which just says that the school system can't issue the bonds until the resolution that you're, you've got before you tonight is passed by the Commissioner. In the last five East Floss, that has been passed each and every time. It's a housekeeping, it's not a county debt. A county never raises taxes to pay it. The county doesn't have any obligation for this, it's all the school system. But it has to be done according to the constitutional provision, that's all it is. The way it works is the sales tax will, is, is believed to pay for all of the bonds. And what the school system has done is that the underwriters have anticipated that if the school system, through the sales tax, will collect a million dollars more a year above the payment of the bond. And to show you how conservative it is, is that if the sales tax went down over twenty-five percent, in other words, if we lost a quarter of all our sales tax, there would still be enough sales tax to pay the debt on these bonds. The intercept program, and, and so the way you finance this, and the way the, the school system has financed it, is the sales tax placement bonds. If there's a deficiency, the school system has to use its general fund, its general operating expenses. If that's still not enough to take care of the deficiency, the school system has passed a resolution, which is called an intercept resolution, that says to the State of Georgia, if we have a deficiency, the money that we would get from the state, go ahead and pay that deficiency. So, and they would only have to raise taxes if the sales tax wasn't enough, the general fund wasn't enough to make up the deficiency, and the state appropriations wasn't enough to make up the deficiency. That's never happened in the twenty years of the intercept program for the State Board of Education, the school system has never done that. And to our knowledge, there's not been a school system that's had to come up with any tax monies. It's all been paid from either the sales tax or from the general fund. And so what we're asking you, as the Commissioner, to do tonight is to, is pass this resolution so that we comply with the obligation of the Constitution of the State of Georgia. Again, I just want to emphasize, it's not a county debt, it's not a county tax, it's not a county bond, it's just a requirement of the Constitution required by the county to sign. The other thing I might mention, these are for, these were all approved by the voters, and these projects are capital outlay projects, buying facilities, equipping facilities, modernizing facilities, renovations, school buses, computers, technology, CTAE, anything you can think of with capital outlay projects, which will all be taken by, taken care of by the sales tax. The reason the bonds were issued was that in order for a school system to enter into a contract to do a capital outlay project, you have to have all the money for that project upfront. It's not, it's not paying, hopefully you pay for it upfront, you gotta have all that money before you ever tackle a project entered to contracts for it. And so what happens with the school systems is that if the state comes in, and if you have any questions, Chris could probably talk, speak to that better than I could. But if we have a project, the state will say, we'll give you this much money to do that project, you gotta have this much money to match it. So what that helps in having the money upfront is that we can get appropriations by the state to help facilitate these projects in Walker County for the school system. So like I said, I don't want to take up, probably to. So like I said, I don't want to take up, probably took up more time.
No, that's very good, very good information.
Uh, I just wanted you to understand and make it crystal clear, I'd be glad to answer any questions you got, but I just wanted you to understand.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add about anything about the projects, or anything you want to share that y'all are working on? That's, these funds would be going toward?
Yeah, this one, what Mr. Womack kind of touched on it, there'll be, well, you got classroom additions going, uh, looking at doing a couple auxiliary gyms, a couple of high school athletics, so they'll stay some late at night trying to run all their teams through practice and that kind of thing. Uh, technology buses, uh, we're way behind on upkeep of our buses and keeping the new, new in. They're launched this last East Floss, and, uh, we're trying to continue that with this one.
Okay, very good.
We had a total of thirteen projects that was outlined very specifically in the ballot that was approved. These projects comprised, that was ballot approved. So nothing's been done, it wasn't ballot approved, and really it's, like I say, in, since nineteen ninety-seven, it's the smallest issuance. The board has cut it down. The projects have been reviewed not long ago, they've been streamlined, and this is what we're hoping. Hoping we can accomplish, uh, these projects without another one.
Good. I know, uh, I reviewed this with our county attorney, he was here at the office of the day, we went through this. Uh, and I know he had worked with Mr. Womack as well on this, and email correspondences. And again, this is a housekeeping thing that, uh, has been done on all these other bond issues for East Floss. Again, this doesn't obligate the county government to this debt structure. Uh, this is all handled through that East Floss and through the school board, but we, uh, have to play a part of the process. So does anyone have any questions on this tonight, for myself, yes?
What would be the cost to the individual citizen of Walker County of this approximately? I just, to break it down to a very easy, really, presentation, I just don't need to leave money, but what's going to cost us? At the individual level, roughly?
It's all sales tax. No adware, no adware tax at all.
So it's one percent, correct?
It's a one percent sales tax that has been, this is not a new tax, it's a continuation of the tax that first began in nineteen ninety-seven. And since that time, all bonded indebtedness, and as a matter of fact, all the capital outlay projects that were outlined, that we were able to do, we don't have enough money to always do them, but they've all been paid by the one cent sales tax. No adware, no property tax.
So our current sales tax of, uh,
Seven.
Seven percent, wouldn't go up?
No, sir.
Not based off of this? Yeah, it's already been in play for several years, this is, as he said, a continuation.
One of the mysterious overtones of what I read in Mr. Connor Jeff stories and other in the Commissioner's letters about the horror of this Erlanger thing in the hospital, and things we don't quite grasp at the moment, sound pretty routine in housekeeping. And now we're looking at a, to me, incredible disaster, and this is in, to me, that context of wondering if we could put it off until we have a clearer picture of what tragedy is coming down the road for Erlanger.
Right, I mean, I've, I have been very sensitive to make sure that our county government is doing things physically responsible and making sure things are handled correctly, uh, and went through this in great detail to, to understand it and, uh, make sure it was not obligating the county. We have enough debt in the county government now, uh, and even some to share, uh, debt, if they would like some of it. But, uh, this is, uh, again, not obligating the county government, it is obligating the school system. And they have well positioned on the collection and knows what those are, they're not maxing that out. If I felt like there was any risk of this, I would not sign this, but I feel, I feel very.
Is it a motion, you have to sign it by the Constitution of Georgia?
Uh, I think if I did not sign it, it could possibly kill the deal, I think possibly.
Well, I, I didn't want to say this, but if the Commissioner did not sign it, uh, the law could mandate that he sign it. Because it's not, it's a, it's a mandate of the Constitution, and, and it's just, like I say, it's not a county debt, it's not a county obligation, it's not a taxpayer debt, other than a sales tax, which has been continued from your year. But what this is, it just says that no bond can be issued until that resolution is adopted. One thing that I, I, I forgot to say, but I wanted to mention, the school system is issuing debt of fourteen million sixty thousand dollars, but the interest rate was so low, was, that was able to be sold, the bonds were sold at such a good interest rate, is that even though the obligation of the school system is fourteen million sixty thousand, the school system will actually receive fifteen million and pay back fourteen million sixty thousand plus then. And like I say, the way they've set it up and run the numbers, you have to realize that the two point, um, the twenty-one point seven million is projected over five years, that is, that also takes into account a decrease in county sales tax that occurred last year. So that's not only a zero growth, it's a negative growth. And so it's, it's projected that all the debt that's being incurred by the school system for this, you will still collect each year a million dollars more than the debt.
I know it's your projection that you will collect, uh, a million dollars more, but is there any possible way that the county could end up being obligated to pay it if you don't do that?
County is not obligated at all to pay it, it's not a county debt.
Why does the county have to approve it then?
Because the Constitution says it, or the board does.
And this is not just in this county, it would apply across the state. And when I was on the city council in Chickamauga, we had the same type resolutions from the city of Chickamauga. School system had to come to the city council. So that, that is, uh, as Mr. Womack mentioned, it's pretty standard practice. It's just, I call it a quirk in the way the system's set up, and this is what we gotta do. Yes, sir?
Again, I'm probably very, uh, I live here, been living here for my life, like, but, uh, I, I, my gut feeling is, is that all of this kind of thing should be postponed, if we can, until we know what the impact of these legal decisions, potential seven mil tax that I read about, Erlanger can force us to pay. Uh, when you start adding the little one percent sub, they get high.
Well, in this situation.
The potential impact on the county could have an impact on the sales tax.
Yeah.
And a lot of, lot of negative impacts, so I just, my instinct conservatively maybe is, is to, could this be postponed until we have a clearer picture of what the county's facing?
Well, the, this was actually.
And would that be desirable?
Well, this was actually voted on by the citizens back in twenty fifteen.
We didn't know then what we know now.
To, to pass, to pass this, and, uh, I've gone at this with great caution, just to make sure I understood what my responsibilities were and to verify solely that there's no obligation by, to my office as Commissioner, that we would ever have to do anything, even in the worst catastrophics of events. And so I've been reassured that, uh, in reading through this and talking with our attorney, we have zero risk in working with them on this.
I'd admit, and I fully respect you, but we heard that before, not actually.
I, I understand what you're saying. You're, you're, I understand what you're saying, but I think maybe to make, to help make it clear, we're not cosigning anything. We're not cosigning any debt. We're not signing any bonds or making any commitments to the repayment of those bonds.
I, I would just leave the second comment, that there's a way to postpone it until we have a clearer picture before us, I would recommend you consider. Other than that.
I, I appreciate your concern, and, and I know this is probably news to many of y'all that have not seen this, but I have spent a lot of time to, to validate those concerns, because I had them originally as well, just out of extreme caution, even though I had done this, uh, as part of the city council before, but, uh, uh, there's not any risk for us in this in the most worst catastrophics of events.
How often does this come about, that you have to sign and?
I think historically, it's happened about every five years when the East Floss is voted on.
It's a, like, uh, like we said, it's a continuation of the tax that was imposed in ninety-seven, which was the time that the law provided that capital outlay, you know, before we had an East Floss, capital outlay projects, schools, buses, equipping, renovation, uh, all of these things had to be paid, had to be paid if you did have a tax dollar, adware tax dollars. And this was a, a way to allow these things to be funded out of the sales tax, which is, everybody has to pay a sales tax. And that's when it first came into effect in ninety-seven, and, uh, has been continued on, uh, through twenty fifteen. And it will then expire again in the twenty, uh, I guess, it's on seventeen, in twenty twenty-two. Be time to review it again if voters are inclined to do it. And again, it's all paid, uh, by the sales tax, no adware, no property.
I would like to make a remark. I'm very pleased that it's in the form of a sales tax, because most of the people who have children in the schools are renters, they're not homeowners. So people that don't have children or have grown children, when it comes out of property taxes, they're paying for something they paid for years ago when their children were young, or that they don't have children. So I like that it's a sales tax and it includes everybody that way, I think that's a good thing.
Well, I specifically checked with the underwriter today, to be sure my thinking was right. And one of the things that he told me was that, and they do these all over the state, every, every county is a school district, so you have a hundred and fifty-nine of them. And, um, what he said was, is that in the, this was just a sort of a belt and suspender thing, when the state passed about twenty years ago, an intercept resolution provision that says that if your sales tax should somehow fall short of what your bonds were, then you have monies that come to the school system by virtue of the state, they're called state appropriations from SBOE. And that, um, before you would ever get to the taxes, and before you'd ever get to the general fund, you'd do an intercept. And to his knowledge, and they do these all over the state several a year, that, uh, there's never been a school system in the state of Georgia that got to a point where they even had to invoke the intercept resolution. But it's already passed, just in case it's passed. So we've got three things to get to before you would ever get to, um, the school system had to have a, a tax, but they've never even gotten to the second part, so.
Okay, good explanation, thank you for explaining that, that I learned several things here tonight, I appreciate y'all both coming.
Thank you for having me.
Speaking of that, I'll go ahead and sign this, so y'all can move forward with your process of what y'all need to do on getting all that paperwork documented. So she'll get you the original, and we'll make a copy of that.
I just get a sort of like copy tomorrow, if you can.
Okay, that's fine, sure, sure, absolutely.
I'll give our students someone else. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, there's for you to sign to attest on that. And this was, this here is a, a copy for us, where their board, the Board of Education, did a resolution and passed this, and had their board secretary sign it and put the seal on it, so we included that in the packet, so y'all would see what the school board passed, just for additional information, with not any action I have to take on that, it's just for information for our records and for your review. Okay. We have a proclamation for American Indian, American Indian Heritage Month. Proclamation, American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by American Indians and in, and indigenous people, these contributions have enacted the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and for their customs and traditions are both respected and celebrated as part of the rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native Americans are all diverse group with a rich and multifaceted system of government, language, religion, values, and tradition. During the month of November, our nation celebrates the culture and contributions of the first Americans. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy-six, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George H. W. Bush in nineteen ninety, designated the month of November as the National American Indie- Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of the American Indian Heritage Month, communities' celebration, as well as numerous cultures, culture act, uh, act, artistic and educational and historical activities will take place all across Georgia. Now therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Walker County So Commissioner, do hereby proclaim November twenty seventeen as American Indian Heritage Month in Walker County, Georgia, to honor the unique heritage of the distinguished people, sign and seal the twenty-sixth day, two thou- October two thousand seventeen. We'll go ahead and sign this into our record, test that. Okay, we have another one here for, um, Retired Education Day in Georgia. Proclamation, Walker County Commissioner, Walker County, Georgia, whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November the fifth, two thousand seventeen, is Retired Education Day in Georgia. And whereas there are more than a hundred and twenty-one thousand retired educators in Georgia, twenty-eight thousand plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educator Association, and whereas retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for the citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions, uh, that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for the society. And whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now therefore, I, Shannon Wit- Shannon K. Whitfield, Walker County So Commissioner, do hereby proclaim that the date of November the fifth, twenty seventeen, is Retired Educator Day. And also call on the citizens of Walker County, Georgia, to observe that day in a, in appreciation manner honoring retired educators. Sign and seal the twenty-sixth day of October, twenty seventeen. Do we have any retired educators in the room today?
You have me.
Hey!
I am representing our local chapter, Walker Retired Educators, W.R.E.A. I am a member, I'm here as a representative for our president, who had a death in her family. So, uh, I'm here to get my picture taken with you.
Oh, good, good, okay, well, let me sign this real quick, then I'll, I'll stand up and we'll do that.
And my young man that I knew from elementary school is going to take our picture, Josh O'Brien.
Let's see, a good student? Just want to make sure.
I was the, like, I was the student, I was a student secretary in the school, and I have to say, I never stopped.
Did you play that very well?
No.
Yeah, all right, there you are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to be part of this. Okay. Proclamation of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas November the eleventh commemorates a celebration honoring veterans of the United States Armed Forces and those killed in battle. This commemoration originally called Armistic Days?
Armistice.
Armistice, thank you, I'm sorry. Uh, it began as a commemoration of the ending of World War One, November the eleventh, nineteen eighteen. And whereas after World War Two, it was recognized as a day to pay tribute to all service members. And in nineteen fifty-four, it was designated as Veterans' Day. Whereas in Walker County, Georgia, wish to observe this day to honor veterans, but especially those veterans from our county who so bravely and vigorously fought and gave their lives to protect and preserve our freedom. Now therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Walker County So Commissioner, do hereby proclaim that November the eleventh, twenty seventeen, be observed as Veterans' Day in Walker County in honor and remembrance of our own veterans in the United States Armed Services. Sign this day, November the tenth, twenty seventeen. So I've actually, uh, will be presenting this at an event in November, so I know we've got veterans in the house here tonight. Would you please stand so we can honor you? And thank you for your service and your bravery and your, everything that you've done for our country, thank you for being here as well. Okay, you should have in your packets a copy of the department statistics through September. Uh, this is a report we started putting out on a monthly basis, and as we've gone along throughout the year, we keep tweaking and adding things to this. Uh, the first part of this talks about our animal shelter. Uh, we've made a lot of great progress in our animal shelter. Uh, our adoption and, uh, rescue and return to owners is something that we take, uh, very serious. And also the reduction of our euthanasia rate. And so you'll see there are year-to-date totals, uh, on our adoptions, we've done very well. And we've already adopted out more cats this year than was last year. Uh, two hundred and fifty-two cats this year have been adopted out or returned to the rightful owner. And we've already adopted out more cats this year than was last year. Uh, two hundred and fifty-two cats this year have been adopted out or returned to the rightful owners versus a hundred and ninety-five last year. And then we've adopted out six hundred and thirty-six dogs this year versus eight hundred and seventeen last year. Uh, our euthanasia rates are coming way down. I think you'll see drastic improvements there. Uh, where we're, our goal is toward a target zero of our euthanasia, so uh, we're, um, two-thirds of the way through the year. Uh, unfortunately, I have to report that we've had two hundred and twenty dogs that had to be euthanized, two hundred and seventy-three cats. Uh, many of these animals, uh, were sick or injured, uh, and it was causing them pain and suffering. And so we, uh, uh, sometimes have to make those tough decisions. But as you can see in comparison of last year's data, uh, we've made great strides and improvements and brought attention to this, and it's helped our adoption rate and also allowed us to save more animals. Uh, code enforcements continues to do a great job. Uh, in September, they did five hundred and eighty-eight inspections, uh, that were in compliance. So that means they went and visited five hundred and eighty-eight locations and found no violations. So we, uh, logged those in our database, so we have records of those. They did find seventy-three cases where there was at least one or more violation. Uh, we do work with the citizens and give them at least thirty days to come in compliance. In the month of September, we were able to close thirty-four cases, which means those cases had been out of compliance. Uh, they worked with us and we were able to, uh, get them into compliance. So year-to-date, we have, uh, documented two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven uh, that were in compliant and in good standing. We have found one thousand two hundred and twenty-six that had violations. But, um, happy to report that a total of four hundred and three of those for the year have come in compliance. So you can see from twenty sixteen, we had limited data, but the number of violations last year was two hundred and twenty-one. That was for the entire year. So that shows you there wasn't a lot of activity or a lot of inspections going on. Uh, if in nine months, we found over twelve hundred, and they did two hundred and twenty-one for the entire year. Our fire department, uh, we made some changes over the last several months, and our biggest change come October first, where we expanded into two additional full-time fire stations. We took existing staff, existing equipment, and cut their budget fifty thousand dollars. So we're doing more with less. Uh, through this, in the month of September, they had three hundred and eighty-five responses. Three hundred and thirty-nine of those, uh, were responded by our QRVs, which is our quick response vehicles. Uh, we have, uh, six of those, one each at our full-time stations that we're operating now. And so we are able to run and be safer with those smaller trucks. They're more cost-effective, better on fuel. We put two men per truck, uh, because ninety percent of the calls that we run, from what our data, our own data, this is not a national statistic. This is our own data that we try. Ninety percent of the calls that we run have nothing to do with a fire. They are medical, first responder, can't get the cat out of the tree, trees down, those type of things. Uh, we are running about seven percent of our calls that are fires that are not related to a building structure. They would be a car fire, grass fire, things of those nature that are fires, but they're non-related to a structure. Uh, in Walker County, we are only running an average of about three percent of our calls that are actually a structure fire. So if you look at the year-to-date numbers, and we started the QRVs, um, I think about May, I believe it was, we've run one thousand nine hundred and fourteen quick response vehicles. Three thousand three hundred and sixty-eight calls total, uh, versus last year for the total year was three thousand four hundred and ninety-two. We anticipate and are projecting that we will run four thousand calls a year going forward. So implementing those QRVs, you'll see those numbers continue to come up, uh, as we now have those placed in six stations. Whereas of the September totals, we only had those placed in four stations. Our litter pickup, uh, this just is a, continued to be amazing to me, the amount of litter that we're picking up off the sides of the road. This is one full-time county employee using two to three to four county inmate trustees on a daily basis. Folks, that's a lot of soda cans and a lot of paper wrappers and debris that they're finding on the side of the road. Uh, the, the person that's doing this, uh, Jimmy's done an outstanding job of cleaning up our county. You can see, uh, in the month of September, he picked up a hundred and thirty-six tires off of the roadsides. We don't go on private property. This is off of the roadsides. So for the year, they've picked up ninety-five thousand three hundred and forty pounds of trash and nine hundred and sixty-one tires. While we're speaking of tires, we have a tire amnesty day coming up at our landfill on November the fourth. Uh, well, we have received a grant that, uh, signed the documents on our special call meeting, where we're gonna allow the citizens of our county to be able to take their old scrap tires to the landfill. As long as they're, uh, twenty-inch in wheel diameter or smaller, they, so we cannot accept big truck tires or big farm tires. They have to be twenty-inch in diameter. So there's a lot of cars on the road now that have twenty-inch tires. So cars and trucks. We're not allowed to take any solid tires like maybe on from a forklift or a heavy piece of equipment where the tire's solid. Uh, but we did receive a grant that will pay for this a hundred percent from the Georgia EPD. And our main focus of why we want to do this is twofold. We want to clean our county up, to make it more beautiful, the natural beauty that we have. But most importantly, we are trying to, uh, battle, uh, mosquitoes from the West Nile virus. There has been a reported death in Catoosa County. This is a serious threat to our region. And there has been a couple of other reported cases in our local region here, uh, but there has only been one death. And so mosquitoes will multiply with, you know, the presence of water standing. And so when you have used tires laying around that just naturally hold water the way they're made, that is a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. And so if we're going to work as a community to combat this West Nile virus, one of the easiest and simplest things we can do is get a, get away from the stagnant standing water. And so tires are a big thing. As you can see, we've had almost a thousand tires on the sides of the road. So we're anticipating probably receiving about two thousand tires the day of this amnesty on November the fourth. And that will run from eight AM to three, so it's eight AM to three PM, Saturday, November the fourth, rain or shine, we will take your tires. But they need to be, you know, uh, they can't be full of rocks and dirt and those type of things. You gotta bring us a tire that's a tire.
Unmounted.
Unmounted, you don't need any wheels, you know, we need, we need tires, not baggage to go with the tire. So, uh, we think this will be a great event and will help us clean up our county and help us fight the West Nile. Mountain Co. Farms, yes?
I like to throw out that the tires being dumped along the highway are not, the largest percentage of them are not tires being dropped by the citizens in our county. Their, their tires is being distributed not only here, up and down, uh, when somebody drops a tire out there, uh, an individual's not gonna drop no forty or fifty tires straight down Chattanooga Valley Road all that one night. But I know who is. And they're also dumping them, oh, we're in Murray County and everywhere else. And I've been working with them over there because I've got some inside information as who's doing it, proof of it and everything. And it's not being done by, the majority of it's not being done by us. It's being done by someone that has a business in the county. That's dumping them, about the trailer loads, I know the person that's working there, that they get this information.
Have you spoken to the Sheriff's Department or code enforcement?
I spoke to this, I've been talking to the, and gave them the man, the person's name in, um, over in Murray County. But I haven't, I haven't talked to, uh, to, um, I think.
Sheriff Wilson. Sheriff Wilson.
Call him, Wilson. Steve, I haven't talked to Steve about it. But it's not, it's not the county doing it individually. Because as I said, if you wake up one morning and you go down the Chattanooga Valley and there's about a whole line all the way down the road of tires, that's not the citizens doing it. It's just one individual company that's doing it, that's been doing it for years.
Okay. We'll need to work on that. Yes, ma'am.
What's being done with the tires that are turned in? Are they being recycled or?
Oh, we have Payne Gillie with us tonight, who's our Director of our Landfill Sanitation, so I'll let him answer that question.
Oh, yes, they are, they're here in landfill. They're turned into playground chips, industrial fillers, you know, a variety of things. They're being shipped to Calhoun. There's a company there that processes them. For a trailer load, thirteen, it doesn't cost, this was all covered under the grant money, but the cost is thirteen hundred dollars for a trailer load, about a thousand tires.
Yeah, so this, this grant, uh, covers the cost of disposing the tire and also the transportation of the tire to the recycling center.
I've got a phone number of a company in Hightown, Tennessee. They charge you to pick the tires up, and you gotta have at least a hundred. And they use them to build retaining walls. And the reason I had to get the tires, because it's been so expensive to get rid of. And I talked to them, but I hadn't got everything in mind.
I'd, I'd be interested in that information because we, we not only have, we won't, we, we only, we had tires from this event, but we also have regular tires that we set through the year. And we have to, we have to dispose of those tires, so I'd be glad to get that information from you. You know, it might be another source for us.
Well, I, I talked to them, they got, they, they told me we had to meet EPA regulations and all that stuff, but they were looking to have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd be interested in that information. And as part of this program, the, um, the entire process of reuse has to be an approved process through EBD. So they have, in, in the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, so they have to meet their criteria before they can appear on that list. And then, and then, uh, they give that list to people applying for these grants, and we choose off that list who we, who we want to use. And we chose the company in Calhoun as it's closest.
The individuals have a limit because they, I've kept letting tires over the year, it's always so expensive to get them out.
We've, we've not put any limits, but we're just asking that retailers and businesses, this is for the residents of our county. And since our objective and our key goal is to clean up tires because they hold the water, we wanna try to get all the outside tires cleaned up. And so, um, you know, we've not put any limits on this round. We hope to be able to do this again in the spring and get another grant in twenty eighteen to be able to do this again because we know not, everybody's gonna hear about it, everybody's not gonna be available, and we have no idea what kind of numbers we may see. So, uh, we hope to be able to do this again next year. Sir, yes, sir?
Is Walker County going to utilize any of the recycled material?
Uh, no. No, once we, once we give it, what could we use it for? I mean, I, I have no use for industrial filler.
Well, I understand, but, uh, you know, they're making stuff for playgrounds, stuff like that. And we have schools that be, you know, that stuff all the time.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's, I guess if the school board wanted to buy the material from, they are a business, so they, they sell this, they buy the tires and then they process it, and then they sell it.
Well, uh, and I, I understand the, the process, but, you know, what they're calling me is, they get all this raw material, they make a profit. Walker County's doing nothing other than getting cleaned up. And there should be something for Walker County's getting some of the product back to U.S. or, you know, putting on playgrounds, doing the projects that they need throughout the county.
I, I'm just grateful that there's somebody as close as Calhoun, Georgia, that does this. It, it's no different than when you take cans for recycling, you know. Once you send them to the recycler, part of their ability to stay in business is to, to sell a finished product. And so that's what this recycler does. They sell a finished product and sell for industrial applications and, uh, I know some of these, a lot of times they can use this like as a mulch for, for flower beds and gardens and different things. So that's where they're making their money is on that, um, on that finished side. So I just appreciate them being this close and being willing to work with us and being on the approved list.
And, and I, I agree with that part too, but like I said, Walker County pays up to do mutations, like, some things like that. But, um, if you're having to pay out X amount for it, there should be some type of deal work at work. Yeah, we'll do this, but we get a X amount of discount to give it back, you know, a lot of that.
And, and to be clear, we're in a situation here where the, where the state's paying this and we've gotta follow their guidelines. It's not costing us anything other than just our normal staffing that day at the landfill to handle the flow and the traffic. So we're, we're not got any cost really here that we wouldn't already have on a daily basis at the landfill. So we're very grateful that we've got a recycler this close and also that the states work with us on this grant. Okay, uh, next item here on the Mountain Co. Farms, you can see we had, uh, eighty-eight bookings at, uh, Mountain Co. Farms. So that means there was eighty-eight nights that someone stayed overnight with us in one of the cabins or the house. And so, uh, year-to-date, we're at two hundred and forty-nine. Last year total for the year was a hundred and sixty-two. So they've really increased the numbers out there, and as I've said before, it's amazing what happens when you answer the phone. Uh, one thing that we added a few months ago, new single-family home construction, uh, for both the month of August and thir- August and September both. There were thirteen permits issued each month for new single-family home construction. Uh, year-to-date, we are at a hundred permits had been issued. All of twenty sixteen was a hundred and twenty-three. Uh, we still have three months to go, so I'd say we're probably gonna, uh, surpass twenty sixteen on new home building. Uh, on our public relations, uh, media impression and stories that were actually published about Walker County was thirty-four. Facebook's likes, uh, two hundred and seventy, those are new likes. New Facebook followers, two hundred and forty-four. Actual individual Facebook posts that our public relations, Joe Leggie, actually posted, uh, items on our Facebook page for the month was sixty-six. So if you've not liked or followed us on Facebook, I'd recommend you can see there's, uh, well, that's averaging, averaging over two posts per day of things that are going on positive about Walker County and information to help keep you informed. So be sure and follow us on Facebook. Uh, the website, uh, visits are way up, and as for having good content and correct content on the website is always helpful. So we've had twenty-six thousand sixteen hits. When you look at year-to-date, last year for the whole year, they had a hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five visits to the website, where this year we've had three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred. I think a lot of that's driven because we're putting more information, accurate information, and also all of our meetings, all the meeting material, the agendas, the videos of all the meetings, all of that is on our website, and so it is helping, uh, drive traffic to our website. Uh, last item here to give you on the agenda is our calendar of the remaining twenty seventeen regular scheduled meetings, uh, for the Commissioner's Office. Uh, the reason we wanted to publish this, we've got some holidays coming up, and so that affects our meeting schedule. So, um, for the remaining of twenty seventeen, we will have a meeting, our next scheduled, regular scheduled meeting is October the twenty-sixth, eleven, which is tonight.
Been a long day.
Been a long, hard week. But it is our next meeting, where does that? Uh, now I'm with y'all. Uh, November the ninth, which is Thursday, November the thirtieth, uh, 'cause normally we would've been here on Thanksgiving. So I didn't want you to have to come out Thanksgiving, so we moved that back a week, uh, and made our regular meeting on the thirtieth. Uh, we have December fourteenth, also the same thing, uh, applies to the week of Christmas, so the twenty-eighth. Uh, also, uh, November the ninth, the meeting will be held following a public hearing on the FY two thousand eighteen budget meeting. A, are typically held the second and fourth Thursday of each month. Uh, there will not be a meeting for three- Uh, there will not be a meeting for Thanksgiving, November the thirtieth, meeting serves as a replacement and will include a readoption of the twenty eighteen budget. All public meetings are held at, uh, six-thirty at the commissioner's office here at one oh one South Dix Street. Uh, you see a couple of asterisks there, uh, we will have a public hearing on the November the ninth and then a, a readoption of the budget on November the thirtieth. It, and what that's about, it was brought to my attention that we had a, uh, technical accidental misstep on our budget process. Uh, once I got to looking at that a little closer, I realized we were supposed to public, our, our, publish our, uh, a notice in the paper in the Walker County Messenger and give a week's notice that we had, uh, had a budget coming up. So we had to get that out there, have the budget hearing, and then we have to wait a week after that and actually adopt the budget. So, uh, that was just a misstep on my part, uh, take full responsibility, uh, for making that, uh, misstep. And we want to, uh, clear that up and make sure we do things the right way, and I'm taking ownership of that mistake. Uh, but if that's the biggest one I make, I think we're gonna be okay. Uh, so we will take in, uh, uh, that ad's going out, it will be in the paper, uh, this next week in the Messenger, there will be a small ad noting that we will have that public hearing. We'll come back here, we'll talk and take questions about the budget, entertain any, uh, comments for that. And then we'll come back on November the thirtieth and readopt the twenty eighteen budget. So, any questions on that or our meeting schedule?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, sorry to interrupt, is the budget available anywhere? Like, I can't be here or not.
Yes, uh, it's currently available online, and I would, I would suggest getting it there. The reason for that, uh, we do have copies here, but they're ten dollars for the set. Uh, the general fund budget is seventy-three pages, and the additional, uh, budget that we had to do separately for the other funds, which includes the landfill, Mountain Co Farm, the nine-one-one center, is an additional twenty-seven pages. So when you combine the two, the budget's a hundred pages.
Okay, and if you have any comments or questions, can you do that online or?
Uh, you could send us an email would be appropriate, if you would like, or a letter by mail if you had any additional comments. But, uh, that budget is available. It also shows on there some history of actual, so you're gonna see what their revenue and expenses were for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Uh, what they were, uh, up to that point for twenty seventeen, which was not complete. What each department requested for twenty eighteen, and then what we made an initial first pass approval on for twenty eighteen as a fine. So, it's our understanding that that's the first balanced budget in sixteen years for every department. So we do have a balanced budget, and it's broken out by department, by line item, and it is balanced all the way through.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, one thing that we don't have on the agenda, we're gonna add here, I know it's getting approaching eight o'clock, but I felt like this was important. And it's just gonna be some information for you, but, uh, since our, uh, landfill director was here, Payne Gillie, uh, we had done a project on chipping all of the, uh, brush and tree stumps and all those type things that are brought to our landfill. And we stockpiled that, and then we take and, uh, run that through a chipping process. It's part of our recycling pro- uh, project that we do to be in compliance with the state. And then those chippings are, are sold off, uh, to a company in Alabama where they use it as a fuel source. And so it keeps us from having to put all of that debris, uh, anytime trees fall or brushed or clippings and so forth from trees. It keeps us from filling that into our landfill. And so we have a great partner over in North Alabama that actually pays us for that, that mulch, and they use it as a fuel source. So Payne, if you'll give us an overview of that chipping process, tell us what the cost ended up being, what our projections were, and how that compares to historical data, please.
Uh, about two months ago, we put out bids, uh, for the grinding service, and five contractors responded. And, uh, we went with Big Woody's out of Abuson, Tennessee, and they mobilized to the site, uh, the week of October second. And, um, ten days later, they were through, they were, they were finished. Now, you know, ten days, we worked, uh, we worked through a tropical depression, we worked through weather, we had some mechanical issues. But they actually did about five days worth of, of grinding out there. And we monitored our meters and we kept the wall, but then equipment started to stop and that sort of thing. So we had, we originally estimated it had ten days of grinding, it's kind of a benchmark, um, to, to, um, to tally the, the bids. Um, but, so we were looking, we were thinking around, you know, forty thousand dollars or so. But after it was all said and done, you know, mobilization, demobilization costs, uh, equipment costs, they had three pieces of equipment out there at one time, uh, plus the grinder operating, uh, we came in at, uh, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Which is a substantial savings from the historical amount that we were paying. Uh, last year they paid close to sixty-six thousand dollars for grinding services. And, and the way the contract was set up, the contractor was paid every month fifty-five hundred dollars, whether they were doing any grinding or not. So, this is a substantial savings for the county, and we're very proud of it. And it took a great effort by the landfill team, and, uh, yeah, I'm very proud of the guys that focused out.
Good work, appreciate the, the effort, y'all, definitely.
And speaking of, if you actually recycle, you'd be not bad.
Right, we've got, we've got, uh, we've got plenty of mulch out there, y'all, twenty dollars a front-end loader, well, come get it. But, uh, we take, we take this to Alabama and they use it, and, and we're, we have enough now to where we can possibly, I'm talking with them about upping our, our shipments every week from one load to two loads. So that'll be, uh-
Historically, we've had enough volume to take them a tractor trailer load a week. And so they have more capacity and probably receive recycling from other locations. And so we hope to be able, based off the volume that we have ready to go, to start taking them two truckloads a week. And what do they pay us per truckload? Remember?
It's, it's anywhere from four to four fifty.
It's based off weight.
Right.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting around four hundred and fifty dollars a load for them to take that. So again, just, you know, to recap, historically, last year they were spending sixty-six thousand dollars a year to do what, under Mr. Payne's leadership at the landfill, just did for twenty-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars. So that's a, a substantial saving. We saved about two-thirds of what that has cost in the past. And we were projecting when we did those bids, it would take probably ten days, I mean, you know, just estimating, looking at the pile and knowing the size of the equipment. So we were anticipating him to spend up to forty thousand dollars to get this done. And, uh, he was able to stay on task and, uh, monitor everything's closely and manage this project and got it done for twenty-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars. So great work. Tell the team we appreciate everything that they've done, and that's a great report. Okay, that officially ends our regular scheduled meeting, so we will adjourn. The official meeting that we will open up, uh, for any public comments or general discussion from the floor. Yes, sir.
This, this morning on one of our local news stations, I think you alluded to it when we first sat down, but they, they led us to believe, or led them to believe that Erlanger was gonna try to do something to force you to enact another tax. Is that, uh, did I read something wrong, or is that, was that covered in our letter that we got, we got a tax bill this year?
It's a very real threat. Uh, I have tried to negotiate with Erlanger. I've met with the, the C E O three times since the first of the year. Actually brought some of my notes with me here, just, cause I figured this would come up today. Uh, my first meeting with C E O, Kevin Spiegel, was here at this office on February the seventh. Uh, our public relations director, uh, Joe Leggie, who's here tonight, he had a meeting with one of the representative from their marketing department on March thirty-first to talk about some of this. I had my second meeting with Mr. Spiegel on June the sixteenth. Uh, then we found out on July the thirteenth, that the U S Court of Appeal says that Walker County owes Erlanger eight point seven million dollars. So that was an appeal that was filed last year. By the time it got through the legal system, it was July the thirteenth of this year, and that was about the second or third time that, that case had been appealed. And so I felt like, at that point, that we were throwing good money after bad to try to keep fighting this. So, at that time, uh, I met with, uh, Mr. Spiegel again from Erlanger and, uh, his attorney and one of his other assistants on August the second. And I told them that we're finished fighting. We're not gonna file any counterclaims or suits or appeals. We don't wanna do that. So, on August the twenty-fourth, I wrote a letter to Erlanger and submitted that through our county attorney, to their attorney, and gave them an offer where we would make twelve equal installments over the next thirty-six months, starting in January, and each quarter, we would write them a check for six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They had sent me a letter prior to that where they were giving us three options to settle this. The first option being they wanted a million dollars a, a quarter, for nine quarters. Folks, if we would have tried to attempt that, to pay that off in nine quarters, I know you don't like your tax bill, it would have really, really been ugly to try to do that so much faster. So this way, what I offered them and what we put in as the new public health facility and service district would generate the revenue, we're projecting at a rate of about two and a half million dollars per year, which would equal out to those payments of six hundred and twenty-five thousand per quarter, that would pay this debt back over three years and would give them approximately seven and a half million dollars. So we are asking them to forgive one point two million dollars of this debt. Uh, the question has been, or, well, let me back up, not the question. In the petition that they filed, Erlanger is making claim in their petition that they filed this lawsuit that basically I have the money today to pay this. And we have been very open and very transparent and very public, we're operating on borrowed money. When I came into office, I had to borrow four million dollars to get our bills called up. We had cutoff notices for utilities laying on the desk, we had eight hundred thousand dollars in the bank, three and a half million dollars worth of past due bills, and a million dollar payroll loan. So we had to borrow four million dollars from Bank of Lefet. I can't say enough good about the Bank of Lefet and the Gilbert family. I was able to go over there with our CFO, Greg McConnell, and we met with the Gilberts uh, that morning, mid-morning, probably around ten or ten-thirty. By four forty-five that afternoon, they had approved for us to get four million dollar loan. That's what they call a tax anticipation note. They set that up as a line of credit, as our tax anticipation note. That note has to be paid back to be in compliance with state law by December thirtieth of twenty seventeen this year. We knew at that time, on our cash flow projections, that that was not gonna be enough to get us through the year. So I think along about June or July this year, we were able to work with another great bank in our community, First Volunteer Bank up here in Lefet, and was able to borrow a second four million dollars, because we knew we were gonna need eight million dollars total. And so they worked with us very graciously, and they loaned us that money and allowed us to draw that as needed. It also is due by December thirtieth of twenty seventeen. We have been asking citizens, now that you have your tax bills, if you have the financial ability to pay your tax bill now, please do so. It will help your county. I know not everyone can do that. I know a lot of people, their taxes are escrowed in their mortgage and your hands are somewhat tied. But if you have the financial ability and you have to write that check every year, please pay those taxes now if you are willing to help us. Because the sooner we can pay that tax anticipation loans off of these banks, the less interest we'll pay. And our goal is to try to get that paid off before Christmas. Well, folks, my Christmas will feel a lot better and Christmas dinner will taste better if I know that debt is paid. Because when it gets to that week, it's gonna be a burden in my saddle, and I'm gonna be worrying if we've got enough money to come in and pay that debt. So for Erlanger to say that we have the money in our accounts now to pay this debt is just false. And so the Public Health Facility Service District that we have set up, we have received some money already where people have paid that. And so we found out today that we could write them an eighteen hundred dollar check. That's how much we've collected. I'll be more than willing to do so if they would like me to, if that would help things, helping this settlement, helping their cash flow, I'd be more than happy to write that check. Uh, it's very disappointing, I think, when you look at this timeline, when I started having meetings with them in February, I came in here in August, and I put this, uh, public health service fee in place. The tax bills got out October thirteenth. The tax bills are due December twentieth. Folks, I'm moving as fast as I can to get them a payment. We're moving at light speed, which you know in government, that's pretty slow. But based off of the regulations and the rules and everything that has to be done, I'm moving as fast as I can move to get them that first payment. We don't have an agreement with them to settle this, but when the money comes in, we told them we would send them a payment by January the fifteenth, and we're gonna do that. We want to put this behind us and get this burden off of us. So I would have to say that I was, um, very taken back and was very disturbed that Erlanger filed this case knowing that we've been so public about what we're doing to pay this. I don't quite understand why they did that. Uh, so, I've had to spend some more of your tax dollars to work with our legal team, because that, uh, suit that they filed, we've got to now try to defend ourselves, and so we've got the attorneys back on the clock. And we're gonna have additional legal calls in order to defend this. They are asking for a jury trial to be able to try to go prove that we've got the money, we're just holding out. They also say that I have the legal ability to raise taxes even more, and folks, I'm not gonna do that. If the taxes get raised to pay Erlanger, it's gonna be on the hands of the C E O of Erlanger. It's not gonna be me raising the taxes more to pay Erlanger. If they want to drag us into court to increase your taxes, it's going to be Erlanger that is increasing your taxes, it's not me. The only way that I would do that is if I had a federal court order telling me that I had no other option. But that would only be pressed and pushed by Erlanger pushing that. It's not gonna happen any other way. I assure you of that. So, again, it's a, it's a sad day that we're even having to talk about this. Uh, I think we've got a track record to show that we have worked diligently to try to settle this. And, um, it's really, it's really sad that the seventh largest hospital in America with a billion-dollar revenue is bringing this type lawsuit on a neighboring county. Does that answer your question?
Well, partly, I, I guess really what I wanted, I guess the answer I wanted to hear was, had they accepted your plan and then back, and then took backwater on it, or redid on it, or whatever?
No, they rejected, the, the offer that I made to them in writing, they rejected it within an hour. And, uh, they did not make any additional counterclaims. Back to the offers that they made me, there were three, as I mentioned one. The other two are not legal for me to do. And we've, we've had that conversation with them, our county attorney and their attorney sat at the table and said, yeah, that's right, that's, that's a problem. Now, with that said, what that means is, is as a sole commissioner, I don't have legal authority to- to commit revenues past my term unless it's voted on by the citizens. And so for me to go and increase spending past my term, I don't have legal authority to do that. The only way I could do that is to take and put it on a referendum, put it on the ballot for the citizens of Walker County to vote it up or down. That's expensive, it's time-consuming, and it delays. And so, uh, you know, that's the position that I'm in, you know, to be able to do that. I don't have the, really, the flexibility to go do more TANs because then it would be due at the end of the year. And we're gonna have to continue to live on these tax anticipations or these TANs again next year. We've already done our cash flow projection through December of twenty-eighteen, where we had to borrow eight million this year, we're projecting we're gonna have to borrow six point five million next year to want to pay off in December. And we will not have to borrow that, it looks like, probably till end of May first of June, based off of our projections. Or this year, I'd start borrowing money the second week of January. So our, our financial position's getting better, our cash flow's better, we're managing things better. So we've been able to kick that need for cash flow out to end of May first of June and lower that projection by one point five million dollars. My goal has been is to lower that about two million dollars a year. So over a period of my term here, over four years, we would get out of those tax anticipation notes. Because the tax anticipation note, the best way to look at that is it's payday lending for government. It's a horrible way to do business, it's operating from behind the eight ball, and it's very, very expensive to do because of the interest associated with that.
So you're anticipating what collects the taxes, will take care of the TANs and a payment to Erlanger?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it will, if our projected revenues come in, it will, it will include paying Erlanger two point five million in twenty-eighteen.
And take care of the two TANs?
Yes, and then, uh, take care of those in December, if everybody pays their taxes, their majority. And then we won't have to borrow anymore for cash flow till end of May first of June. Yes, sir.
But one thing I was gonna say, uh, then the prior commissioner obligated us for this debt that exceeded her time in office.
Well, that, that's a good question.
So she was illegally doing it to start with?
No, it's not quite the case. Let's talk about that, ma'am. What she did is she co-s, she co-signed a loan for ten million dollars.
Well, she oughta have paid it.
And she thought that would never come due because they thought the value of the property and the buildings would always stand good for it. But when those got auctioned off in a fire sale in Chapter Seven bankruptcy, didn't happen. She was able to co-sign that because there was no payment, she was not obligating that. So like with Catusa County, they settled theirs, they had the money in the bag. So they just wrote a check. If Walker County would've had the ability to write a check, then it would not have been money that she would've had past her term. So just like now, that debt is showing on our balance sheet for eight point seven million dollars. That debt could sit there from now on and would not, I mean, it wouldn't be good, but it wouldn't be illegal. What would be illegal is if I decided that I was gonna set up a repayment to them that went one day past my term to commit those revenues from taxes that we've not even collected. I can only personally, as commissioner, commit to a tax anticipation note that would go to the end of the calendar year. And the only other option I have for lending is to do lease purchases. Where there's an asset that you're borrowing or, or making lease payments to. Past that, all other debt has to be approved by the citizens through a referendum.
Another question. Catusa paid their part. Walker County, we owe our part. What happened to Dade County? How did they get out of not paying? Had to pay their part.
Dade County was the smartest bunch at the table.
Okay, why?
They were smart enough, they were smart enough to say no.
Okay.
They, they never, well, in the original deal, they told them all, we're not co-signing anything. Because their entire budget is nothing but ten million a year. They said, we're not signing up for this, we don't support this, we're not signing up for this. And if I'm not mistaken, they even gave up.
They gave up their seat on the board.
Yeah, they gave up a board seat.
But they didn't participate at all, 'cause they had hospitals that were closer than, than I did.
I think they had two board seats, they'd give one of them up because they didn't participate. And they were highly criticized and ridiculed for not helping out and stepping in play. And at the end of the day, that was the smartest bunch at the table.
Well, when, when your predecessor, first of all, I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Uh, you got a pan full of dishwasher guts in your lap, you didn't have time. But, uh, your predecessor, doing all the, over the back sixteen years away, setting up all these loans and stuff like that, where did the checks and balances come from to her? Who says, okay, Commissioner, you cannot do this, we not have it, we do not have the money? Is that kind of, were your financial officer, the county attorney? Who says, who slaps the hand and says, no?
Well, that's, that's part of the, the situation from what I understand from the state. They say that, you know, accountability for any elected official, the way they look at it is at the ballot box. And so what they did, they did a lot of maneuvering and, you know, taking assets and selling them to the Development Authority and bonding through the Development Authority and, you know, co-signing this loan. And next thing you know, with the leases that they've signed up for and all the way through, when the audit comes out, it's seventy million dollars worth of debt. And so I have made, you know, suggestions to our state legislators that there, that needs to change, there needs to be some more checks and balances, probably at the state level or through the Department of Treasury or something, and it is in other states. Where there is some checks and balances for any debt that's being taken on, even if it's voted on by the citizens, to make sure that there is ample revenue to take care of this. Uh, so, you know, throughout the campaign, I had read, cover to cover, the prior year's audits, and I knew we were in financial hardship. All while the previous administration was saying I was lying and that we really only had twenty million dollars or less in debt. And I knew the prior audit, certified audit, showed fifty-three million. That did not include the bond for the Development Authority, and that didn't include any debt to Erlanger. So I knew based off the revenues, there's no way they'd get it down to twenty, twenty million dollars.
With that resolution you cast, put the wall and all the stuff like that happening, the resolution at the last meeting, I was like...
Uh, it, it will, it will help, you know, and I did that to, uh, better manage our budgets. And what she's speaking of, we passed a couple of resolutions. One where we put a purchase order system in place. And for all departments, including myself, uh, any of the other elected officials that have their finances and budgets through this office, and also the other constitutional officers. So anything between two hundred and five thousand, the accounting depart, accounting department can approve. Anything five thousand and a penny up to fifteen thousand, I have to sign off on those purchase orders. Anything fifteen thousand and a penny and up has to come to this public meeting on a regular meeting or a call meeting. Because up to that resolution, the example I've used a couple of times, if I wanted to go up to Long Mercedes and buy an eighty thousand dollar Mercedes as my new vehicle for county government for me to drive, all I'd need to do was just sign the check. And I could've done it legally, no questions asked, y'all might've read about it in the paper maybe. Now, since I put that resolution in place, that applies to me as well. So any purchases over fifteen thousand dollars for assets like that would have to be brought up in this meeting and discussed and talked about and shared with the citizens, even if it's in the budget. And if it's not in the budget, it better be an emergency or something that we just got to do and then we'll have to amend the budget at some point. So that's to put checks and balances in place. Also, the other thing we do, we did, is put a legal level of control in place uh, that's authorized by the state constitution for the governing authority, which is your commission, to be able to do where we set up three, three buckets, so to speak, in layman's terms, where you have your budget for personnel, your budget for operation, and your budget for capital purchases. And so whoever is over that department or that elected office or constitutional office, they can move money up and down the general ledger of that bucket. So if they've got an operational budget and they had so much allocated for fuel, but instead they need to use some of it to buy tires for the vehicles, I mean, they can move money up and down and make adjustments. But if they need to take money and move it to capital, even though they've got those dollars available, if they need to move it over to capital to say, go buy a new vehicle, that's gotta come back before this meeting to amend that budget to make you, as the public, aware of what's being done.
So when it comes before us at this meeting, you'll still have the ultimate say, though?
Yes, I'll have the say, it's more of the transparency, accountability, and to show that we don't release a hundred-page budget and then we don't follow it. If, and, and I'm sure a budget that complex and that many departments and not knowing what may happen or break or tear up, we're probably gonna have some amendments to, amendments to the budget, which is pretty common. Budget's just a tool and a roadmap and a guideline to keep us from overspending. And so if we do that, I don't wanna come up and us have a need, uh, to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a piece of equipment at the landfill to cover up the garbage that we've got to have. And y'all come back a year later and go, whoa, wait a minute, that wasn't in the budget. We may have to move that money elsewhere or something like that comes up. So it's all in our quest to be more transparent, but yeah, ultimately, as a commissioner, I would have that final authority. Yes, sir.
And round numbers, you used the figure of seventy million that Erlanger thinks we owe them, is that, did I hear that right?
No, sir, that's how much our total debt is. At the end of the last audit was seventy million.
How much of that is to Erlanger?
Eight point seven million, five thousand.
And who do we owe the rest of it to?
There's a list.
I mean, just in round numbers.
Well, there's, uh...
Banks, uh, bonds, uh...
It's, it's a, a splash bond is, I think, about seventeen million of it from the previous splash. There was, uh, around fifteen million dollars where they bonded for the industrial park and leverage Mountain Co. Farms, the Ag Center, the Civic Center. There's some, uh, lease purchases for twenty police cars that they're on lease payments. Uh, there's, um, the building in Rock Springs with the new tag and tax offices now. That started out at about eight hundred thousand, so that's probably around seven hundred percent.
What's our total budget?
Our, our total budget is, uh, roughly twenty-seven million for the general fund. But here's, here's where we got the real problem.
That's what I'm gonna ask. What's the number?
Is our, is our net position. So governmental accounting's a little different than the private sector. In private sector, you got like the retained earnings, you know, what your value is, what you've got left after your assets and liabilities and so forth. In government, they call that your unrestricted net position. In training, the University of Georgia, they told me you want two to three months of your monthly expenses in your retained earnings in case you have a bad month or you'll get collections or you have a catastrophic event. So in our case, our expenses are about two million a month, round numbers. We would need two to six million dollars in our net position unrestricted to have just for the cash flow and any hiccups that may come along. Our last audit as of September thirtieth of twenty-sixteen, where we should be a positive two to six million, were a negative seven point five million.
So, uh, may the room allow me to speak from the heart about this as a born? I was born on the second floor of the Bank of Lefet. I have a loan with them. I talked to Janie Gilbert. I said, Janie, I read about this incredible potential tax impact. What would that mean? She said, for us, it would mean a lot of people couldn't make their escrow, they'd lose their homes.
There you go.
Commissioner, Mr. Sole Commissioner, and I don't envy you being a sole commissioner 'cause I worked for the city, 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 uh, for three years, the five commissioners, Robert Walker, Rose Beaches and all that stuff. Mr. Leggy, I was in your shoes. Don't envy you. But I was the PR for the gentleman, you know, back in the early seventies. And, uh, and, uh, I don't see how you're gonna climb out of this hole with the current policies. We, we have one count, party in the county, essentially, the Republicans. Now, whatever we say about the previous commissioner, it's been one party for quite a long time. We don't have a lot of other views. We didn't hear a lot of dissenting opinions. And you may wonder what caused this, as I'm wondering now, and I can't answer the question, okay? But speaking from the heart, I'm thinking real hard, I know BB pretty well, I have for a long time. My mother knew her, my mother worked in the history of the county. I'm Sid Henshaw's, my name. And at any rate, I, I know what it's like to be in government. I know what it's like to be in your shoes. I had to help the mayor write the speech on annexation, Obama Water Company. They're hard hits, they're really hard. So where do we go from here? I think two things got us into this, and then two things can get us out of it potentially. And one depends upon your incredible wisdom and humility. Because I don't think, Commissioner, you can solve it. You've got to be a genius at finance, at bonds, at the market, at, at, at everything that those guys in New York do to make the billions, to get us out of this successfully. If what I'm being told is correct, my, my friend at the bank, Randall Walker, and Janie Gilbert and others, I talked to Bill Lothrich, I went over and tried to see Mr. Brown when he filed that lawsuit about the budget. I said, what's going on here? This is something that we've never had before. What got us here, though, long-term, I think, is what we have to back off. And I totally admire what you're doing and totally respect you after hearing you tonight. But I feel very accomplished. However, I think it's bigger than you can solve. Because we don't yet have a system that can get us out of this like those other counties did. They were smart. Why weren't we smart is what bothers me. BB's no dummy, she's smart. Uh, I like her, frankly. She had a heart, her, 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 she had, Commissioner, a good feeling for what these people in the county needed. She did her best, she made mistakes, but she did good things.
She was part of our name.
I, I want to make that clear, it's not personal, you see, it's not political. I used to be a strong Republican until I saw what the government did in Chattanooga. And then I became a little more moderate, a little more liberal because I believe in government. You have to have government, a good one that works, not the big one, not the little one, but one is all you need. I think you could do about without the PR stuff here, Mr. Leggy, and you could, and this is where I want to end up with the two things. Put down the progress you're making to have a commission and get rid of your job.
Be on the ballot. Be on the ballot.
You ran on that and we supported you on it, and there are a lot of people believe that that is one of the contributing causes to what got us in this spot, is no checks and balances. No matter how good you are, with nobody looking over your shoulder,
That's correct.
Uh, you, you, you're not gonna hear other opinions and, and nobody's simply that good. So how soon can we get the sole commissioner, is, should be on here on the check sheet, in my opinion? Where are the meetings? Where are the political meetings? Where are the educational meetings? You know, who's talking to the voters, the legislators? So that's the first thing, is how quickly can you get rid of yourself? Now, I'm gonna say this with absolute respect, but I wanna make this thick because I've been thinking it. You could do something very dramatic and deprive Erlanger of a chief executive that can make decisions as you're empowered to until the sole commission comes in. If you did something very dramatic like that and effectively resigning, you'd get a hundred percent of the vote when you ran for the next commissioner ahead of it. Now, that's a bold political move. Have a vote for you.
Well...
I won't do the part, but I would vote for you, okay? So that's the first thing, is get rid of the sole commissioner, deprive the legal process of a decision-making executive for the months it takes to get a sole commission. Now, that has to be done in the legislature, I know, it has to go to the governor, everybody else, but you've got strong friends.
Okay, stop, stop, stop right there.
Oh, hey.
Hold on, hold on, that process you just outlined has been done, finished, completed. Hold on, hold on. That process you just outlined has been done, finished, completed. I've got the documents in my office. It will be on the ballot November of twenty eighteen. That's the fastest we could get it on the ballot. They started working, some private citizens started working on that earlier this year to get it in the twenty seventeen legislative session. The governor has sent me a signed copy of that. It's already slated to be on the ballot in next November.
A board of commissioners should be on the ballot?
Would it be like, well, no, I don't mind the details. I'm just trying to think, big picture here. That's sort of what my training was. I did DR for excellent once.
I'm ahead of you.
I don't think lightly, and I hesitate to bring this up. I think you could do something dramatic with legal counsel and advice, and political advice, that would postpone all this legal stuff until we can have a fully-equipped, you know, multi-person commission here, which would be federal force.
That's gonna be up to the courts, and up to the will of how far Erlanger wants to take this. If they want to take it all the way to the federal court, then it'd be up to the federal jury and the federal judge to make that determination.
What you just said makes it even more practical then. It's gonna be on the ballot in a year. There's strategies you could use that are very dramatic, I think, and that might benefit the people. Because if what Janie told me is correct, there's gonna be a tremendous, tremendous financial impact.
Yeah, we could be catastrophic.
But you gotta realize that they're asking for a jury trial in a federal court. If you look, if you go online and you look at the federal court calendar, most likely, it's gonna be as much as sixteen months before they can actually get it on the calendar.
Well, I don't know, I don't know the details of this, and I'm pretty sure you're right. I'm just suggesting...
I've been told it's a minimum of nine.
It's a minimum of nine. That there's some really smart people in this county, such as my friend Carter Patton, certified financial analyst in Chattanooga, owns Ashland Farm, you know. He's a Georgian, born here. Carter could help you a lot in this financial stuff, and he would, if you were asked.
Well, you made a very true statement a while ago. I can't do it all. I do have some professionals that are assisting.
I'm sympathetic with the position you're in.
I do have some professionals that are helping me with a lot of this, and getting advice and direction from our association of county commissioners. They've been very valuable and help, and they have done that for me at no cost to the county. They've sent people up here, speak with them quite frequently.
We could probably qualify for the Legal Aid Society at this point, you know? You could go to Emory or Georgia State or the law school.
Let me move forward here, if we would.
The second thing, I just want to...
The second thing is... Let me go here. You've had a lot of time. I don't mean to be short, but we were running out of time.
I have to say this, sir, just to...
Let me move forward. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I've got a question about the millage rates.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I made my last point, and went online, looked at the millage rates. And there's different rates for different areas of the county. Why is there a different rate for different parts of the county? Your millage rate may be less than mine, and I'm pretty sure you've got a bigger house than I do.
Well, the actual millage rate is set by two criterias. You have one for the unincorporated areas of the county. And then you have the incorporated areas, which is your cities.
I understand.
For the county portion.
Why are the unincorporated higher than the incorporated?
The unincorporated is less.
Is lower?
It's lower, and the reason for that is a tax credit that we apply due to an insurance premium rebate. So all of the insurance companies that sell insurance policies in the state of Georgia have to pay a franchise fee to the state. The state takes that funding based off the county, where it was generated from, and they rebate that back to the counties. And so we can take that rebate and apply it to those tax millage rates for the county residents and the unincorporated to lower that millage rate. The cities also get a rebate, same principle, same concept. And they have the ability to also apply that if they choose. And it's quite complicated in the code, but Walker County historically has elected to use that to reduce the millage rate in the unincorporated area.
Okay.
In the unincorporated, so be anything outside the city limits.
What about the city? Because I was looking at the city of Chickamauga, which is after the rate thirteen, something. No, it's right, well, minus twenty-six, point something.
Okay, well, that's...
City of Chickamauga has their own school system. You're paying, you're having. We have the county. In the unincorporated area, you're gonna pay the school system. It's a difference.
So you gotta look at the different breakouts on the tax bill. So if you live in the city of Chickamauga, they zero out their millage rate to run the city government. Because they make money off the utilities that substantiates with the sales tax to run the city. I think the millage rate for the school system that's set by the school board, I believe it's fourteen point two-five mils that is applied there for the city. But they also pay the county government millage rate, but they don't pay the county's school system inside the city limits of Chickamauga. Now, the other cities in Walker County do, because they don't have a city school system. So if you lived in the city of LaFayette, as an example, you're gonna pay the county tax rate. You're going to pay the new health facility service fee that we apply. You're gonna pay the Walker County school system millage tax. And you're also gonna pay the city of LaFayette millage tax.
So is it pretty much even out that way?
I don't know if I'd ever call it even, but I could call it different. It's gonna be different where you live, and, you know, how everything's set up. So, you know, if you take somebody's tax bill and add up the millage rate in Chickamauga, it's gonna be totally different for somebody that lives in LaFayette versus somebody that lives in Villanow. Because it's three separate taxing districts.
Yeah, no useful, I was wondering.
So, you know, the tax commissioner's office up at Highway ninety-five and twenty-seven, they're the experts at that. They deal with that on a daily basis. The role of my administration here is to set the millage rate. We pass that information to them, and then they handle sending out the bills and handling exemptions and the collections and those type things under the direction of the tax commissioner.
Okay, well, I do have a question about, absolutely. You've already answered a couple of them, but they don't put the square footage of your home on your tax bill, okay? They put how many acres you have and things like that. And had I not gone to the website and actually looked up, and then gone up to the bill, that they've gotten my home as being over nine hundred square foot larger than it is.
Yeah, that's something, there's another function here, the tax assessor's office, which is upstairs in the tax building. And so sometimes human mistakes can be made. And if you have a question about that, that would be the department to get with. And if you think there's a discrepancy in your square footage, you could invite them out to come and do a reevaluation, or bring them the documentation.
I'm sure on the website.
Well, you would have to show them the documentation to validate that their data is wrong. Like if you had an appraisal or something, maybe acceptable, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But otherwise, they would have to come out and re-measure, and then they could update their records and make that correction. But that function is done through that office, and I don't have any control or oversight.
Is it needed after? I mean, because I didn't contest it, because I didn't know they were doing it until I went to the website.
I'm not sure. There's very, very strict state laws that they have to follow. And they have state oversight, and they also have a board that oversees that department, a private citizen board. So I don't want to get in and try to overanalyze or try to articulate everything that they have to follow and misguide you on anything. But they have some very...
If you got a discrepancy, you need to go to the office and talk to them.
Yeah, just go to that office.
You can't file appeals like January the first.
Yeah, but you can get your data corrected, and get them to help you understand, and work that out. But that's the only office that has the authority to do that.
Okay.
It's upstairs there at that office on Highway ninety-five.
What about exemptions? I mean, with all this of...
They could also help you with that, because there's a lot of different quirks to those laws and different exemptions. They would also have to help you with that.
But I was just wondering, with all that we owe Erlanger, and all the bills, some of these exemptions, like the free pour exemption, the conservation, and I am for conservation exemption, and all these that give large landowners and companies property tax at maybe, what, twenty percent of what they should?
Well, many of those exemptions are set by the state legislation. And so you would need to speak with Senator Mullis, or Representative Argon, or Representative DeFenbald, to talk to them about that, or any potential changes you would like to see.
Maybe a moratorium?
There, again, I don't have that authority. That's outside my lanes of my responsibility. And if I was to try to get into that, I would be overstepping my reach.
So that's, that is to the state itself?
Many of those are, the conservations and those type things.
There's state conservation, and there's a federal conservation. And the federal one, she's talking about the large tracts of land. They're very, there's a lot of control of what you can do, what you can't do, how you can use the properties, blah, 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 and yes, they don't pay that much.
I know, they just, they just think like you distribute it.
You read, you... Your name's on the property, but it's not your property.
It's representative of land trust.
I know.
But it's like I can go, I own a house in Murray County. My house is in the middle of a federal conservation grant. I can use that man's land. I can hunt on it. I can cut trees. I can pick up dead wood. But, and I can use it just like it's mine. He can't keep me off of it. He can't keep you off of it. But he can't, the only thing he can do is say, "What's my land?" But he doesn't pay taxes on it.
Yeah, that's the same thing like distributing.
Well, you can thank our senators for that.
Yeah, that's above my level. Yes, sir.
I'd like to get in on this tax deal, if it's okay. There's sixty-five thousand people living in Walker County. If you divide sixty-five thousand by eight point seven million, I think you'll come out about a hundred and fifty dollars a person. Now, people who own land is paying a whole lot more than fifty dollars a person. If you own a farm, and if you don't have some kind of conservation tax or something, there won't be any farms much longer. They'll put the big landowners out of business with the tax laws. Now, I own a small place. I don't mind to tell you what I pay. Ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Not a thing, something?
Yeah, now then. A lot of taxpayers don't pay that kind of money. So I, you know, when I hear people talk about the taxes that they pay, you know, into the system, sometimes I don't feel like it's real... They don't really think about it fair. They think about the guy that owns something gets by with something. I can assure you, you don't get by with anything.
Well, one thing too, on the fee that we put in place for the Erlanger repayment debt, since that was a fee, there are no exemptions. All this conservation and all that stuff does not apply to a fee. So every partial in Walker County was billed that fee based off of the fair market value of the property, and anything on that property as a structure. There were no exemptions.
Not even the conservation, because it can tumble?
No. Let me say something about conservation.
I like conservation. I just like people and places.
Conservation in the state of Georgia, you are not taxed for it. I know. I've got conservation covenant in the state of Georgia. You use it for ten years, okay? You get a reduced tax on that far of the, of your farm or whatever you got. And it has to be agriculture. You have to have cattle, or you've gotta have forestry to cut trees off of it. You've got, and you've gotta regrow them if you cut them. You've got to cut hay off of it. Somewhere or another, you've got to qualify for the agricultural aspect of that.
And...
But you do not get no taxes. You pay taxes.
You pay taxes. And if, 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 while that ten years is in effect, if you sell it, and it doesn't feel just for lately, if you sold it, you had to pay all the back taxes. But now they've changed the law, so if you do sell it, that the person who buys it has to continue with the conservation. They have to assume it. But that's also in there. If you take a, if you take a five-acre tract out and give it to a child or something like that, you're gonna, that's called, you have voided the conservation. You lose it all.
It's in the family.
Right.
It's in the family.
In the family, you can do it, yeah.
But regardless, you're still avoiding paying taxes. You still own the property, just like...
No, you're paying taxes at a reduced rate.
At a reduced rate.
Now, like you said, you sell five acres, ten acres, whatever, and you break that covenant. Whatever your taxes would have been, let's say you're through that ten-year covenant, five years. Okay. You go and sell ten acres, let's say. They will go back. They will take whatever your taxes were for that five years, times two.
Yes.
Plus a penalty.
Kind of like a retirement account.
And I know somebody that did that, and they paid a penalty of six thousand dollars on ten acres. They sold it for seven thousand dollars an acre. So they were fined six thousand dollars. It broke the entire covenant. The covenant was on like forty acres. Well, actually, it was on about eighty acres. But it voided the covenant on all of it. So, you know, I just don't want people to misunderstand that you're getting it and no taxes.
Yes, ma'am. Let me move forward. Next question.
On the complete opposite end of the spectrum, from what we've just been talking about, and I wrote down my thoughts so that I wouldn't miss any, but I'm a fast reader. I'm a disabled person. There are varying levels of disability, and I'm one of the few that are a hundred percent disabled. I live in a humble home that I purchased responsibly to live within my limited means. Prior to purchasing, I researched all associated costs to be sure I could afford it and not be a burden on the government or my neighbors. Property tax was a definite factor in my calculations that led me to the small home that I purchased. Having lived in my house for just over two years, the property taxes have increased so drastically, I'm forced to consider giving up my home. On behalf of the fully-disabled and the elderly whose sole income is social security, I'm asking if you can enact an abatement for those of us who have no other means of income or relief. And to correct the question of can you, I know you can. The question is, will you consider an abatement for the most disadvantaged and vulnerable in our community? For your convenience and expediting your decision, I have compiled the following statistics to make your decision easier. According to Walker County's webpage, the median household income in Walker County is thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three, although the census data states it's forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two. My disability income is sixty-three percent less than that. The median per capita is twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty, which includes all people, including children. My disability income is thirty percent below that. The majority of household incomes is sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars. Mine is only twenty percent of that, eighty percent less than that. The median property value is a hundred and five thousand, nine hundred. My home is roughly fifty percent less than that. An abatement for those in this small percentage wouldn't create a hardship for the county. I would also like to present you with the following facts. According to the United States Census figures, fourteen to seventeen percent of Walker County is disabled and/or on sole social security. I want you to note that that number includes those who are only partially disabled but still have a means to supplement their income by working. That fourteen percent also includes the elderly that live with family members who contribute financially, and those who reside in nursing homes and assisted-living facilities. So the actual percent... So the actual percentage of those who are homeowners existing solely on disability or social security is certainly in the single digits and far below that fourteen percent. An abatement for these few will not cause an increase or any hardship on Walker County. However, not enacting an abatement for these few is sure to cause them hardship and might very well cost them their homes. So I ask you, Commissioner, if you would consider an abatement for the most disadvantaged and vulnerable whose small homes contribute minimally to the county's property tax income, but they're the only homes that we have. And if you can't consider it, can we move in with you when we lose our homes? And I want to add as an aside to that. Last night I watched your program and you asked for mercy several times concerning the Earlanger situation. And so tonight it came to my mind when I was making my notes, mercy is given where mercy is shown. And there is a very small percentage of people in this county who just can't afford it. I just can't afford it and I'm gonna lose my home. And it's such an insignificant percentage, Commissioner, that it won't hurt the county if you help those people. And I didn't buy a big home. I sold my home to move back here where I'm from because my mother wanted to live where she grew up after my father died. I sold my home. I bought responsibly. I put every penny that I made from my other home as a down payment so that I could afford a mortgage on just my disability income because I couldn't possibly afford to rent. I couldn't afford rent for what rent goes. I had to use that money as a down payment to give me payments that I could afford without being a burden or inconvenience to anybody else. And as for my personal disability, I can't be homeless. I have had more than half of my digestive system removed. I can only eat very specific things and most have to be blended in a blender. So going into the system somewhere is not an option for somebody like me, nor is it for a lot of the seniors who are existing solely on their social security that are responsible people. We shop here, we vote here. We don't travel far to go shop somewhere else. A, we can't afford it. B, most of us aren't in the physical health or condition to be able to travel to do it. We volunteer when we're able to volunteer and we do contribute to the community. But we, we're living as humbly as we possibly can live. And now we're looking at losing our homes.
Well, I appreciate you coming tonight and that's well thought out, very well presented. This was a very agonizing process that I went through when I was trying to figure out how we were gonna deal with the Earlanger. Because all along the way, they were telling me that if I didn't conform to their options, that they were gonna move forward with enforcement actions.
And they aren't. They filed a suit yesterday.
They filed a suit. And so we, we labored heavily on how we pay this back. What can we do to stay within the legal limits of the law that we have to follow? And how do we make this the least burden on our citizens as a whole? Not just requests in the situational hearing, but for everybody. And that's what I have to consider, is I have to consider everybody. And so therefore, we looked at many different options and different ways to approach this. And conclusion was made, the fairest way to take care of everybody, it put the least amount of burden on everybody, was to do it as a fee for several reasons. One, it would show that that money was earmarked for debt reduction and the payment of debt associated with this Earlanger mess. If we could have done a millage rate increase, then there would have been a lot of exemptions on that, which there are several people here tonight that are highly opposed to those exemptions. It would not apply to all properties. There are also other businesses and things that have received exemptions that it wouldn't apply to them. And so what that does is it shifts the burden to the others. And so the most fair way is to try to lower the burden as much as possible and spread it across all.
I, I have to interject on it because the small, these small homes that myself and the, and the seniors, the elderly, people who are on this sole fixed income, what we're contributing financially with these property taxes is not gonna make that big of a difference. It's not gonna make that big of a difference to the debt, to what's being paid because we have very small and humble homes. However, not getting the relief makes a huge difference to us because we're losing our homes. It isn't like something that you read about in the paper or you see on TV. These are people with the most limited ability to be able to do anything to correct it that are not gonna have their homes. And it's for a miniscule amount. It is probably two percent of the entire population.
You mentioned earlier it was fourteen percent.
No, let me help you with that and I will explain it again. According to the census, fourteen to seventeen percent of the residents in Walker County are on disability or SSI. But that fourteen percent includes people on disability that are able to work and supplement their income.
So what is it that are fully disabled?
They, they don't list it. But the fourteen covers people that are able to work. It also covers people that are living with family members that can get financial assistance from them. And it also includes people that are residing in nursing homes and assisted living care. So those aren't people that are gonna be affected by this. So it reduces the percentage down to probably about two percent of the people that are actually living on solely disability or social security.
Well, the problem that we run into with exemptions or abatements is where does it stop? Is it a hundred percent disabled, fifty percent, twenty-five? Is it certain age?
Would be the easiest for you to enforce because these people-
It's not about enforcement.
Well, these people are the easiest of that as per need.
It's not, it's not about figuring out the formula. It's about where do you stop?
That's where you stop. If somebody can supplement their income another way, then it applies. But if you can't, you have no means to supplement, then those are the people that need help. The rest of the-
Then there's a lot of people that would validate that they're on a fixed income because they get the same paycheck every week. And they would also qualify. And so it's-
Now, don't you think that's silly, Steve?
No, it's not.
That is a silly statement.
I have people constantly telling me-
If they get the same paycheck, they're able to work.
They have a fixed income.
They could go to another job. They're able to work. They're due for a raise.
That doesn't always happen.
I go five and six years without even a two percent cost of living increase in my disability. But people that have a job, they have alternatives. They have alternatives. These people, this, what is in reality probably a two percent, have no alternative. We can't go get a job someplace else. There's nothing else that we can do to supplement our income. Whereas people who are able to work, even the people on partial disability who are able to supplement their income have an, have an avenue and avenue and they have options and availabilities. And this small percentage of people don't.
Yeah. Well, just to reiterate, and I'm gonna have to move on. I'm sure there's others that have comments. We did take this very serious. We did vet this out. We labored over this. I lost sleep over this. The ordinance has been put in play. It will expire in three years and that fee will go away after three tax cycles. And so it's in place now and it's gonna have to remain as it is.
Okay. The, the last point, uh-uh, wait a minute.
No, wait, we gotta move forward.
The last point that I'm gonna add on abatement is you're abating a luxury hotel.
We've gotta, we've gotta keep order, okay? We gotta keep order.
Well, and I wanna keep on us. You are approving an abatement for a luxury hotel.
I don't have that authority.
But not for this. You told me on the phone the day before yesterday you were doing that.
Authority, let's play that out.
Oh, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know if you followed this or not, ma'am, but, uh, if you're a member of the church or you're a nonprofit organization, you can deal with them and I'm sure they'd be more likely to help you.
Okay, who's next?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question that's wanting to do with what this is.
Okay, sure. You can change the topic.
Okay, um, it's about, um, I used the landfill to take back recycling. And there's just one big bin that it's put in and there's many different things. I wonder what happens to it after it goes in my bin.
For the cardboard?
Well, it's not just cardboard, you know, I've got, um, plastics in there.
Yeah, that's right, it needs to scale now. Yeah, that goes to Chattanooga and it's recycled. So they sort it? Yeah, it's a-
They do the sorting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Sir, where'd you grow?
Yes, sir.
Well, this part of the total adoption.
That's my understanding. Once it went into chapters of bankruptcy, it was done through the bankruptcy process. It wasn't done by the county.
What percentage? I'm gonna get how it was. What percentage of that hospital belonged to Earlanger?
I don't think any of it belonged. I think the ownership lied within the three counties, Walker, Purdue, San Diego. And so when they sold it, they were able to apply credit toward the debt for the ten million and got that down to eight point seven five percent.
But what I was getting at, every state, the United States has a buck sales law, except one. And that's Louisiana. If they sell so much percentage, that option. Whoever sold this is responsible for what they owed.
I don't know how that applies to bankruptcy law.
I, I would leave it, but I just thought of bringing it back. My interest in that.
Did you hear something, sir? Uh, anybody else that hasn't spoke tonight? Has not spoken. Yes, Josh?
Shannon, I have one quick question. I just wanna hear from you. Have you heard from anyone who supported this deal from the beginning, including Haskell or so? Have you heard from any of them as this time this news came out that Earlanger wants this money up front now? And there's a lot been said here tonight, but they're wanting to get up front now. So have you heard from any of those supporters offered any concern or anything like that towards the county and what the county's facing?
As, if I understand your question correctly, if I've heard from anybody that supported the management agreement?
That, that, with Haskell getting, uh-
Doing this co-signing?
In this, yes.
No, I haven't. Uh, I don't know personally anybody that, that I could even reach out to, to ask that supported it then. And I've not had anybody reach out or contact me that was supportive of that, co-signing of that loan, uh, back then. I did hear from Phoebe Haskell on live TV, uh, Wednesday a week ago. And, uh, she told me she knew I had a tough road ahead of me and hoped that the T-Splash passed and had some positive comments, but past that, that's the only communication I've had with her. Yes, sir.
One, one quick comment. I, I, I just want to, I, I think it's concerning citizens of Walker County. I don't think anyone here doubting your, your dedication to this job. And I, and I'll ask you, if we go out of here tonight and we can talk to people in our community, in our church, and encourage them to go ahead and pay our taxes ahead of time, do you think that when we get this six hundred thousand, that Earlanger will accept that and we just get this thing started?
I, I sure hope so. I, I feel that they probably will. We're gonna make every effort to do so. And if, if they don't, we're gonna, you know, publicly let everybody know our attempts and how those turned out.
That's what I was gonna say. I think we should use the media and, uh, let people, we might not want, and we, we might be a little hesitant doing that because people would give it up on, wouldn't want to publicize what a bad shape we're in. But if you use the media and make Earlanger look bad because it's going to hurt, I mean, I, I don't like Earlanger and I, I would tell everybody in the world, don't go to Earlanger for a morning. Okay, if we could publicize this stuff and everything in the media, get some reporters here and, and what's, and talk at the media and let them put it on TV and advertise it, talk about Earlanger and make them feel bad and they might have a, a little bit of a different feeling in their heart because they know they're gonna lose this.
I think it's my role to state the facts as I best know them and to communicate what is taking place. And I cannot get off into, you know, trying to make them look bad per se. If the facts do that on their own, then let it be the facts. But it's, it's not my role.
You might not be trying to make them look bad.
It's not my role, it's just a misterm.
The people know that we can't afford it right now to pay it.
Oh, that's right, we can't.
And they're pushes and just, the people smart enough to figure it out for themselves. We did it out there with the media.
Yes, sir. Back over here.
I just wanted to go back to my second thing about how we got into this terrible spot. As I say, I, growing respect for you tonight, growing sympathy, being the only guy at the head of the table with nobody else to blame it on. I used to tell Phoebe the same thing. Oh, the buck stops with her, you know, whether it's it or not. I strongly recommend as a citizen, and I say this formally and publicly, happily quoted, that to protect yourself before you get too far down the tube with this thing, you may be right about what you did on the public health thing. You may be wrong. I think you're wrong. I think you could have fought it politically, legally, financially. I'll help you. I know people who'll help you, even if it's not too late. What I recommend you do, because there's a lot of money involved, a lot of personalities, two states, multiple counties, multiple hospitals, wealthy doctors. Who knows unless you follow the money? That's the big question. Who knew what and when? As the, our baker asked about Nixon. What did the president know and when did he know it? Commissioner, the further you get into this, the further you get into this, and I'm speaking as a person, out of heart, the more I think you're, you're, you're at risk and putting the county at risk. I recommend then that you call the FBI and formally request a report. Go back to where it started, forensic accounting, and ask them or whoever is equivalent of the FBI at least, but preferably them. And, and get a document that goes to the public with your sponsorship, with your request formally. And that's my request to you, and I'm glad to put it in writing, that you get the FBI to go back and lay it out for all of us to see. How do we get from there to here? Because we are looking terrible if what everybody says is true.
Okay, anything else, anybody? Okay, appreciate you coming out tonight. It's, uh, five after nine and y'all have a safe trip home and be safe.